All right. Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to call this work session of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to order. Today is November 18th. It's a Thursday, 9:30 in the morning. With us today are Commissioner Emily Lindley, Commissioner Bobby Janeca, our General Counsel Mary Smith. I'm John Neearman. It's great to see you all. Good morning, friends. Let's get started. Ms. Smith, call the first item, please.
Item one is the consideration of Sunset Commission review for the agency.
Thank you for that, colleagues. Any thoughts or comments you'd like to share before we hand it over to Director Baker? All right. Toby?
Good morning. Great to be here in the room with you guys, not just pixels on a screen. So, anyway, I don't have a whole lot to say. This is really going to be Elizabeth's show, so thanks for letting us come and give you guys an update. And Elizabeth, take it away.
All right. For the record, Elizabeth Thifftas-Coke, leading TCQ through the Sunset process. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the things that we've completed and where we're headed. So the self-evaluation report has been posted on the Sunset page, Sunset Commission page, also TCQ's page. So it's available for everybody to review. Also available on our webpage is an alert for anyone that would like to have input on TCQ's Sunset process. So that's available on our homepage as well. We began meeting with Sunset Advisory Commission in October. We've since completed the one-on-one discussions on the programs with them. We did that throughout the month of October and a little bit into November. Now we're moving into site visits, which is pretty exciting to actually see what TCQ does in action. So we're really excited to share that with them. We're going to visit Superfund sites, wastewater treatment plants, you know, all the real exciting stuff. A landfill, those good things. We anticipate them working through their recommendations in April, late March, April, and then have a draft report by May. And then they'll present that in hearing through the Sunset Commission. And then that'll lead us into the 88th legislative session. That's pretty much what we anticipate for the rest of the process.
Any questions, colleagues? This could be a quick item, it sounds like.
Perfect.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you and staff have put into this, as well as Sunset Commission staff working with us. And, you know, I'm just sort of waiting to the point where we get to the meat of it and identify what the issues are and, you know, look for opportunities to address those. So you've got, it looks like you've got your trigger finger ready, Bobby.
I can always come up with a question when there's silence. I'm curious how, so we all know and understand how the external audit process tends to go, and there's always plans and then outcomes, where that doesn't always match up with what the plans were, expectations were. Have there been any topics that have popped up where Sunset staff have been, you've seen their eyes light up, where, this is kind of exciting. Do you have any expectation we might see some topics that we hadn't dedicated as much on our evaluation report that we've submitted to them that will have a little more meat that we need to dig through? What are those issues? What do you think they might be?
I don't, not really sure at this point. I think we'll have more ideas when we do follow-up discussions, which will probably be in January or February. I know that we have some follow-up items that he's mentioned, or that Sunset staff have mentioned that they want to talk about, and that's just permitting. They want to meet with all permitting at the same time. Air, water, waste in one room to talk about how they each do administrative review, technical review, and what that process looks like as far as how the procedure overlaps with one another. And we also talked about procurements and contracts as something else that they're interested in, looking at how the program manages their contracts, maybe how the administrative services supports the management of those contracts. Dry cleaner might be another item that we talked about in those follow-ups, but I'm sure there's going to be quite a few other things going on.
It's a more detailed list than I expected. Thanks for going out on that ledge. I asked you to speculate on something, and that's really helpful context. I appreciate hearing where Sunset staff are looking at some of the issues that look a little different from them on second cross. And my only immediate gut reaction response on the first cross-media permitting look is, oh dear. And that's because I'm well aware of how sharply different all of our different silos of permitting have arrived at in each of their unique consensus points among different stakeholders for that media or that program area. And there may be federal requirements in history that feeds into the current point in time we're at, or there may be state, past state directions, state laws that maybe go beyond the federal requirements. Every program in our agency seems to give a very richly different and almost equally complex story to get there. So I'm eager to see what commonalities the Sunset staff see across that point, coming with their perspective that's not as mired in the weeds as ours and our staff live in every day. So I'm eager to hear that. I'm a little wary just recognizing how different all of the different silos are. And so I hope that there isn't an immediate jump to conclusion that it's so inconsistent, because it is. I expect that it will be, but I do look forward to seeing what recommendations they may have in that context.
Yeah, and sometimes those differences, you know, as we know, are really hotly contested by the various stakeholders. So they're dicey to get into, to the extent that we have the authority to get into it. Because like you said, it's often statutory differences that drive it. Other questions, observations? Toby?
Chairman, the only thing I would say, and just, I think across the agency, we've put this out there, but here in the last couple of months, I've tried to make an effort to sort of get out of the COVID haze and get back out in front of people and in front of groups. So saying yes to speaking engagements and conferences and things like that. And one of the messages that we are putting out there, and if anybody's tuning in, I would, you know, I just want to say this on the record, is that engage with Sunset, engage with us. There's ways to do that through our website. We really are, you know, we really want the outside groups to engage, to help inform on how to move forward with some of the programs that we have. And so, you know, whether it's water, air, waste, recycling, I mean, you name it, there's all sorts of different topics out there. But one of the themes that we've been trying to, you know, put out there is engage with us. So I'll just say it here. Please, you know, if you're not willing to come talk to us directly, which is sometimes, for some reason, sometimes I think people don't come talk to us, there's a way to do that, and this is the way to do it. So I'll just say that.
Really important, very important point. Thanks, Toby, for that. Yeah. So obviously, we exist to serve our fellow Texans, and they should have a voice in this, you know, this hard look at the agency. And this is an opportunity for them to do that without having to come through the agency itself, to remain anonymous, without having to work through the legislature if they don't want to. They can work through the Sunset Commission. So I'll just put an exclamation point after your invitation to stakeholders to participate in the process. So appreciate that.
I'll just make one quick comment, kind of piling on with that. You know, what I have said before, and I'll just say again now, I think the most important thing for us going through Sunset moving forward is communication. And I don't think we've had any issues with that. I'm not saying there's been an issue. But moving forward, whether it's communicating with outside groups or communicating just internally, you know, whether it's with us, with the ED's office, all the people within the ED's office, it's just going to be communication. That is the key to moving it forward positively, and I think we've done a good job. And I know that y'all, Elizabeth and her crew have worked really hard to share as much information as they can, whether it's on the public-facing website or wherever, and so I'm very appreciative of that. But I just want to, I always like to harp on communication, how we just always need to be communicating about it, right? And once session starts, it'll be fast and furious, and so we'll have to figure it out then, but communication's going to be the key. And I wanted to give a shout-out to our VIP in the room. Maybe I'll let Elizabeth do it, but thanks for being here. I think it says a lot that you're here, and I think it's a very positive sign that you've gotten so engaged with us. And, you know, we'll continue to communicate with you, I'm sure, on the daily.
Toby?
One more thing. So just, Commissioner, I'd like for you to know, based on that point in the upcoming session, we've actually asked, Farrell is actually now engaging in taking part in a lot of the meetings and briefings that we're doing so that she's properly up to speed. So if members call about certain things, she's able to engage.
That's great.
So we're trying to be proactive in that sense.
All right. Anything else on item one? Elizabeth?
No, but I would go ahead and just, Commissioner Lindley, Robert Romig is in the house.
Robert, great to see you. Good morning again. Thanks for being here.
The whole team is online watching.
Oh, great.
All right.
Hello, Sunset team. Thanks for tuning in.
Well, thanks for being here, and thanks for everybody, to everybody who's tuning in as well. Sounds like we've about wrapped it up on item one. Yeah, okay. Mary, let's call item two.
Item two is discussion of the agency's workforce and internship diversity and proposed activities to enhance diversity.
Colleagues, anything to share before we get rolling here? Nope. All right. It's all yours.
It's been a while since we've been here. Good morning. I'm Lorielle Stepani. I'm Deputy Executive Director for the agency, along with my colleague Romero Garcia. Chairman Commissioners, General Counsel, thank you for having me here today to give you an update on diversity and inclusion. And of course, thank you, Toby, for all of your support with the effort that we've been undertaking for, I guess, it was a year. About a year last year when I came to visit with you guys about our efforts. So to start off with, Toby and I had a conversation, I think it started with Commissioner Janeca was on the phone, Romero was on the phone. And there was quite a bit of unrest in the country regarding racial division. And so we had a conversation and talked about what were next steps. And so we embarked on a journey to look inward at the agency, to talk to our employees, to have conversations and absolutely learn from each other. And so we've done that, and we plan to continue to do that. So again, special thanks to all of the employees who've been a part of our effort and sharing their stories and experiences with the agency. So let's get started. I'm hoping for no technical difficulties, but I know how to phone a friend or two or three.
We have hard copies, too.
Okay, y'all have hard copies, right. So our goal is to build an organic and sustainable culture of diversity and inclusion. And I can't take credit for this. It was Toby's idea. I love the idea because we don't want anything to be manufactured. We want to maintain the TCQ feeling of home and family that we all share as a unit, as a community. And we certainly, as we embarked on talking with our employees, that was one of our goals, to maintain that organic feel. And I tell you, Commissioners, one of the things that's always in the back of my mind is, how do you sustain that? I think the second part is probably the hardest part to do. So, you know, as the years go by, we will certainly keep our eye on how to maintain that culture that we have at the agency. And I'm very excited to give you an update on our diversity and inclusion efforts, and also to share some of the efforts that many of our staff have contributed to all of the initiatives that we've had this year. And it's been, it's been a bunch of initiatives in a pandemic. So to start off with, this is just really an overview of some of the things that we've been focused on. We've had coffees with exec, and I have a separate slide on that. Some of our top initiatives and ideas are to, number one, develop, have a leadership development course that we partnered with the University of Texas to sponsor for a lot of our leadership team. Celebrating diversity, that's something that was really big for our employees as we spoke with them. Developed a diversity mentoring program. We did a deep dive into our hallmark program, the Mickey Leland Environmental Internship Program. We expanded our recruiting options, and we did outreach to school districts where there were large minority populations. For example, Dallas Independent School District, which I'm an alumni of many, many years ago. And then, of course, engagement activities, just regular routine engagement, day-to-day activities with our employees. And so let's take a look at the data. So last year I presented this slide. I've updated it just a bit. And basically, it's, in a way, it's a flow chart of an employee's life cycle with the agency. So there are many ways to be exposed to the agency. I've listed those five, either through the internship program, through postings, recruitment, express hire, which we just had a successful event at the University of Houston with our regional office, and then through contracting. And so as the employee moves through the agency, there is many ways in which the employee can become a part of the leadership team or just become a senior staff contributor. There is many ways to grow at the agency. And so when we look at diversity, it's important that we take a look at all of those entry points into our process and make sure we're giving access and opportunity, as well as mentoring and development, either through day-to-day assignments with our employees or through a more structured program like we now have at the agency. Two things that I added, I added the work leader arrow there because a lot of our program areas have work leaders, and it's certainly an entry point into leadership. And then also, we have career ladders and non-career ladders where our employees can advance through the more programmatic realm versus through a management realm. And so again, it's important that we look at all aspects when we're looking at diversity and inclusion. Before I go over our data for ethnicity and gender in our leadership positions, I wanted to point out to the Commission that the agency has a large number of vacancies. In general, we did receive a large number of positions from the legislature to implement very important, critical programs. But besides that, I think we're experiencing what all other public sector and private sector employers are experiencing, which is we have a fair number of vacancies that we're working through our HR department and our program areas to post. But as you can see, we have a fair number in our leadership ranks of vacancies. And I know a couple of the director positions, we're working to get those filled, and those should be done pretty soon. But in general, you can see we've, there's a large number of team leaders, which are really critical, which are our frontline supervisors. And I believe that's reflective in the data that you'll see next. First, let's start with leadership gender data. In general, the agency has more female employees than male employees. And the trend is pretty much the same as last year. There are more female directors, more female team leaders, and then more male section managers. And then oddly enough, we have even split for work leaders. And again, I think that's, it's just, I think it's a reflection of what we have overall as an agency.
Lorielle, quick question. When we say directors, does that, that universe is directors and deputy directors? Or is that just deputy directors?
That's a great question, Commissioner. It's based on the state classification. So it would be assistant directors, it would be deputy directors, I'm sorry, assistant deputy directors, deputy directors, directors, and also includes Romero and myself. And before I move on past the gender data, just looking at last year as a comparison, the number of team leaders for female and male positions went down. There was an uptick for female section managers, there's a small uptick for male section managers. So again, we're seeing the vacancies reflected here as well. Next, let's talk about the ethnicity data for leadership. As you can see on this graph, we've, I've plotted the directors, managers, team leaders, and work leaders. And again, this is for a point in time, so this is for, we pulled the date about three or four weeks ago. So during a year, it can go up or down, but this is where it is for this point. So as you can see, we had, I would say, the largest increase in, for section managers with respect to diversity. Compared to last year, there was an increase of three for Asian, two for Black, one for Hispanic, and two for American Indian, Alaska Native. And then with the team leaders, like we saw with gender, there was just a downward trend based on, you know, those positions not being filled. And then with Hispanics, for directors, down four, and then up two for white directors. So I think we saw the largest increase in diversity with respect to section managers. And again, our goal is to grow just a wide range and diverse workforce where everyone can participate in the leadership process. Here are the percentages, and this was presented last year, but as you can see, and I'll just round numbers just for simplicity's sake. For our Black directors is around close to 8%, Hispanic about the same, and then 86% for our white directors. And then section managers, a little bit more of a spread. You can see, and we'll start with Native Americans, 1.6%, Asian, 4.9%, Black around 8%, Hispanic 10.6%, and then 65.8% for section managers. I will say that for section managers compared to last year, the percentage was 77% white, and this time it's 65.8%. So we have a little bit more of a diverse workforce in the section manager rank, and the same is true for the team leaders as well. This year, we added work leaders, again, like on the chart before, but it's, again, it's really important for, I think for us to look at that data as well. Although they aren't technically supervisors, they do make assignments, work assignments. They give direction and that sort of thing. And it's really, to me, like a training ground, so.
Lorielle, I'm going to jump in and just, that's too good of a point to pass up. I really agree, and I'm glad that you're taking the extra look at work leaders, even though they don't have an explicit supervisory role. It is such a crucial piece of the acting managerial functions of the agency.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I just want to give a shout-out. I was going to do it later, but I was going to give a shout-out to Kelly Kill-Linden and Donna White and HR staff for, when I asked for the data, they included work leaders. And so I was, I hadn't thought a lot about it, but I thought it was a really good point, so. And last year, I think Toby asked, kind of historically, what have we looked like, what have we done? And so I just updated those charts from last year. As you can see, for Black directors, we've been pretty much the same over the last 11 years. Hispanic directors down a little bit from previous years, and then up a little bit for white directors. And then for managers, section managers, I think, again, I mentioned that we've seen the most spread, increased diversity in that category. And you can see from the different ethnic groups where that, where those fall, as well as for team leaders. So one of the things that we would like to do in looking at all of this is to, I think there's a need for us to continue our efforts to develop and grow our staff, and also to recruit, so that, you know, those entry points into the agency, we get a wide variety of people. And we're also doing a number of external postings as well for different leadership positions. I think we've seen a number, that happened over the last year. So, you know, as a leadership team, we decided that we were going to post more leadership positions. And, you know, I just want to give credit where credit is due. The Commissioners led the way with the chief clerk position, so thank you. And then here's a list of all of the offices and some of the key leadership positions that have been posted over the last year, giving access and opportunities. And honestly, that was really one of the key pieces of information or feedback that we got from the coffees. Staff from all backgrounds, you know, wanted to be able to throw their name in the hat and at least let people know that they're interested in doing more and possibly, potentially serving in those positions, whether they got the job or not. So, for example, Kelly in OAS posted the Chief Financial Officer position, financial administration, budget and planning, and those were deputy director positions. Office of Air, Tanya's going to post her Technical Advisor, OCE Craig, I see Craig in the room, Deputy Director and two Regional Directors. Office of Water, Earl, Deputy Director for Water Quality, Brent, two Assistant Deputy Directors in two of his divisions. And then OLS, Aaron has posted the Deputy Director for the Environmental Law Division, so.
Lorielle, can I, would you mind giving just a quick, I think for the folks who are dialed in from the outside, maybe some context as to why, maybe in the past, we didn't post? Maybe sort of why this matters? Does that make sense?
And so I've been at the agency quite a long time, and I've done all different ways of filling positions. I've asked, you know, for positions to be posted. I've talked informally. I've appointed positions for leadership roles. I think honestly, Toby, it's, you work with people every day, and you are kind of familiar with their work habits, work styles, their leadership potential, and you want someone in quickly to fill a void. And so we would go through the, sometimes you would talk to a few people internally within the division, and we would just ask, send up a memo to, at the time, the Deputy Executive Director, and get that position filled as quickly as possible. So from an operational standpoint, it's a really rapid way of filling a void and going about your business of completing the agency's work as quickly as possible. Posting a position takes a bit longer to do. It, you know, you have to, you know, you have to go through the full process with HR. You, externally, it has to be posted for 10 days, internally for five days. It's just more process. But, and you know, there's still times when we may have to do that for a business need, right? For, you know, for a critical function, we still have to do that. But what we're finding, though, just in talking to people, sometimes with the posting positions, you end up hiring people you never thought would have been interested. And so we're seeing that as well happen. I hope that answers your question.
There's an added benefit, too. So, yeah, having a broader perspective, sometimes we're surprised and we find a better candidate than the one that, sort of the urgency of the moment, might place in that position. But the other thing, too, is that even if you're, even if you don't get the position, it exposes the hiring managers to, you know, the great candidates that are available. And in a lot of cases, we get to meet people within the agency, and they may not be right for this position, but we have other ideas for their future in mind, too. So I appreciate that. So thanks for the explanation, Lorielle.
So this is, now this looks at our workforce, the agency's workforce, compared to the state labor force. And TCQ and each of our offices within the agency, they have, we have a greater number of women than the state labor, state labor force percentages. Now, each agency compiles the data for their agency, and so, you know, you can see that we exceed the projections for the state labor force. With respect to ethnicity, you know, it looks, you can tell, you can see from the graph that we have 61% white employees, almost 19% Hispanic, and 9.9% Black employees. Now, for the Black employees, it's really close. The yellow bar is close to the state labor force. But we certainly, for the Hispanic portion of that, we are well below. So this is just a resource that we, as well as other agencies, to use to identify a need for additional recruitment, to expose others to the agency, and hopefully they'll be hired on. But certainly, this is an indication of some areas that we need to work and a reason for additional recruitment. And of course, you can look at all of the different And of course, um, you can look at all of the different offices, and OAS is, um, has, it probably is the most diverse of the offices at the agency.
I have an idea, L'Oreal.
Uh-huh.
It may not be a good one. I, I hate to add more data to the chart, but, um, what about, what about having a view into the population that we serve and how that population breaks down?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Um, you know, I, I think I talked to HR about that. So, the state labor force looks at, looks at, as I understand, um, people who would be available for certain types of jobs. And so, um, they exclude children and things like that. So, I think we would, could work with HR to get more, get an additional representation of the population, uh, and compare that to our workforce, so.
Okay, and I had been misreading this. I was thinking, you know, state labor force, that's, that's, uh, state-employed people.
No.
No, we're talking about public and private sector statewide. Could be federal employees, whatever, anybody who's employed in the state of Texas. Okay. I-
But I do think it's good to look at the, because we're a state agency and we serve the population of Texas, I think it's good to look and compare and see.
Yeah, all right.
We'll take that on.
All right, well, I learned something. Thank you.
And my, and may I jump in real quick on this, L'Oreal? I wanna be real clear that when we, because L'Oreal hit on it, but this is, when we look at this slide, it is by no means setting up what I would call almost like a quota system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is just to acknowledge what the labor force looks like and see where, how we compare, and then the tools to then reach, you know, to, to possibly move our numbers, or really, I think, what L'Oreal talked about in recruitment and getting to that idea of an organic growth, sustainable growth, um, and finding ways to just reach into communities that maybe we haven't been able to access well before. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're really clear about that, 'cause I think some folks, when they see this slide and they're looking at, they may be able to ju, they may jump to a conclusion about what we're doing or what we're thinking, and I just wanna make sure that we don't go down that road.
I'm gonna stumble into a bit of a metaphor, and it's very, very, may not work at all, but I, I think the state labor force really works in a lot of ways as the analog for background, where we ask our regulated entities to tell us where, where, what are the conditions around the site, what does it look like? And that's what we're doing here. We're looking around our agency, around the, in the surrounding state workforce, and, and I think that's a great point that you raise. I appreciate that distinction, because I think I made the same incorrect assumption. Understanding where even that number, the state labor force, may differ from the population we ultimately serve, uh, adding in the children, adding, adding in retirees, adding in, uh, prisons, I don't know what other populations would be, aren't gonna be included.
There's probably, I'm sure there's a list of other things.
I think that's such a really useful exercise for us to go through, but we're really returning to your point, Toby, uh, acknowledging, uh, acknowledging the, the, the facts, the data, and, and just providing that to, to the public and ourselves to be aware of. And, and I think that a, a gap, uh, a delta between what the state labor force has for a, a particular population and how much of our agency, uh, how many of those people have made it, made their way into our workforce and our leadership ranks, is really worth looking at to be aware of what's going on. Is there a breakdown in how our agency's looking? Is there a breakdown in what, what services or, or educational opportunities are available to those different populations in our state? It's a different, a, a different way to approach that policy problem that I think legislators, stakeholders, state leadership will want to be engaged in that conversation outside of where our agency can, can get into the weeds on it. And all we can do is help shine the light on, on the data that, that then suggests the next step. But I, I think this is a really tremendously helpful exercise, and I'm, I'm glad to see us do it.
Yeah, and again, all the state agencies report this information, and, you know, our agency is really heavily, we have a large number of STEM employees, and then we also have, we also have like financial employees, a wide variety, but a large number of STEM, uh, as well as attorneys and things like that. And so, um, HR has been working to recruit through the Mickey Leland program as an example, uh, more, more students who are exposed to the agency, who could potentially become employees, so. Now for the fun stuff. So, we held eight sessions, we called them coffees with exec, and they were really just conversations. And we did one on diversion, uh, diversity and inclusion, we also did one on teleworking, and so we have, uh, another set planned starting in December. But the one on diver, uh, diversity and inclusion was really informative, and thank you to the commissioners. We had a commissioner attend each session, just one commissioner, attend each session. And it was, you know, our employees share, it was real conversations, real stories about race, gender, international backgrounds, experiences. Uh, we had, uh, some of our colleagues talk about, you know, just the simple things that help, uh, shape our culture at the agency, you know, from book clubs to lunch to the Diwali celebration, coworkers learn, learning from each other, learning about food and traditions, and then also, we heard lots about mental health. And so, Romero was kind enough to take that on for us as an agency. And so, it was really, really, uh, an informative process. Of course, like anything, we heard there were some areas of concern, and Romero again stepped up to track those down, and we followed up on those, uh, because, and of course, uh, we put, I put the policy up here, the agency doesn't discriminate or, or accept or tolerate harassment under twelve point one five. But, so we followed up on those, uh, any of the issues that our employees raised. Recruitment and hiring was really important to them in the coffees, also celebrating diverse cultures, outreach, and just general social engagement, and just being in a safe place to talk about things and talk about how, um, you know, their family history or how they grew up. And so, it was really, uh, it was really an, uh, important exercise for us all to do. So, one of the things that we did, um, in, in response to the coffees, and then we had been talking about this before, we partnered with Dr. Harrison with the UT McComb School, uh, to do, to develop a diverse, diversity and, uh, inclusion leadership course for us. And as you can see, we had three hundred and sixty, uh, of our leadership sign up for the, sign up for the course, as well as our HR staff. And so, it was just, again, having great conversations and just understanding, increasing our understanding of each other. So, um, we had a number of sessions, and we think it was a really, it was a really good effort. And then the commissioners participated as well in that, so thank you. Next, uh, we developed a diversity mentoring program, um, and launched in April. We're on our second round, and I, I wanted to give a shout out to IRD, and here are all the folks, Kara, Sam, Lynn, and Aruna, who took this crazy idea I had of developing a portal where mentees could sign up and match up with a mentor. And we put, you know, we have a hundred and eight mentors across the agency, they put their picture, their hobbies, and the mentees were able to do that. I know Commissioner Lindley was a mentor, and others were mentors, um, at the table here and on the audience, so we really appreciate that. Uh, HR developed training, and also our General Law Division, uh, Yen, developed training for mentors and also for mentees, just so that they could have productive conversations, and also how to prepare for those sessions. And the program is really designed for anyone who, from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and work styles, who are seeking professional guidance as they navigate their careers. And then here are some of the goals, basically, um, growing from different perspectives, uh, retention and engagement of our agency staff, reinforcing the agency's mission, expanding professional relationships. I think especially since we've been virtual or, uh, remote, and also in-person some, maintaining connections, this is a way for people to maintain connections, as well as growing the agency. You know, I, Romero and I think we're talking about this, I think when we were growing, growing up through the agency, we would've loved to have been able to talk to someone in whatever position to give us advice along the way. So, uh, shout out for the program. Um, here are the numbers, a hundred and thirty mentees have signed up so far. Um, we have the commissioners, um, cluster, senior agency leadership directors, tenure staff. The regional offices provide a huge number of mentors, so thank you, Craig, to his staff. And so, if you want a mentor, there's a mentor for you. And again, all employees are encouraged to participate. Um, the only exclusion is if there's a conduct, uh, conduct or performance, um, issue in the last twelve months. Just real quickly, some of the feedback we got, um, this is what the mentees have said about the program. You know, the first one is, if you're thinking about signing up, you should do it. Um, great experience, learn more about, you know, your path at the agency, your potential paths at the agency. And also, the second one really stuck out for me, uh, as I've been teleworking for nearly the entire tenure at the agency, having a mentor introduce me to another person to talk to and seek advice from. So, that was really, really, really good. Moving on to the Mickey Leland program, and commissioners, uh, as I mentioned last, uh, at the beginning, this is one of the things that we did a deep dive into, one of our programs. And so, this slide, although it's at the bottom and you can't see it, it has a link for sponsors, so if there's any external sponsors who are interested in sponsoring interns, you can send me an email, or you could just Google the Mickey Leland program and sponsor page, and we would love additional sponsors for the students. So, we, the agency received a Senate resolution signed by Lieutenant Governor Senator Miles, uh, celebrating thirty years of the program, so we're in year thirty-one. Commissioner Geneca, uh, Ray Everett from the board, uh, myself, all went down, and also Deb Mamula, who was on the floor, works for the Lieutenant Governor, she's a part of the, um, the Board of Directors for us. And so, thank you to the legislature for that recognition, recognition of the program. And again, the, the mission for the program is to heighten the awareness and encourage participation for minority women and economically disadvantaged students, and expose a diversified workforce to environmental, the environmental field, and help train our future leaders in the environmental field. And, you know, in our, in our own agency leadership team, you know, Romero was an intern, Craig was an intern, and so we're seeing all the fruits of the, you know, that labor and introducing them early on to the program.
L'Oreal, if I may, real quick, just a, a shout out to the program. I was a nineteen ninety-three graduate, so I think it was the second year of the program. And, um, at that point in my life, I was drifting. Um, and so, my professor said, hey, Garcia, you need to sign up for this. And thank God they hired me, and that lit my fire. I said, this is what I wanna do. So, I always tell people, if not for this program, um, I don't know where I'd be. So, L'Oreal, thank you for your tireless support and, um, of this program, because I think that it's a wonderful way to introduce students throughout the state and this country to this beautiful agency. We always tell people, we're interviewing you, you're interviewing us. And so, we've really had, uh, besides me, really some good people have come out of the, the program that I'm really proud of. So, um, I really can't say enough about this program, and, uh, the folks you see there that participate and, uh, support this program, the tireless work they do, but with, under L'Oreal's and Deb's leadership, and all these folks, uh, continue to grow this program. And again, I'm eternally grateful for that opportunity that I got. Thank you, L'Oreal.
Thank you, Romero.
We may wanna pause for a moment, um, we've been having phone issues this morning, and I think we're, um, dialing back into the line.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio control-
Okay, we're back on.
Hey, if I could just interject real quickly, just so folks are clear about what the program is, we place interns, a lot of them internally to the agency, but also with other state agencies, as well as, as, uh, employers outside of government. And then our alumni not only end up at TCQ and at other state agencies, but they end up at, um, regulated entities, NGOs, um, practicing environmental law, just a host of things. So, we're, we're bringing great talent into the agency and also into the, into the field too.
Yep. Um, and as you can see, this is the, these are the Mickey Leland board members, Diana is the president, Nina's the vice president, Ben was actually an intern, and now he's an attorney locally and contributing. Melvin was a part of the original group, and so, he's been there the whole time, and Leonard, next in line. I mentioned Deb with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, Allison Leland joined us in the last few years, she's the wife, spouse of Mickey Leland, Ray Ever, Everett, former president with Encore, and then, uh, Brandy, former intern, and then Dana and Juanita and myself from the agency, and then Susan, um, a former UT professor. So, um, you know, Juanita has done so much work with the program over the years, and so we appreciate her, so. And then, so we formed a focus group here, all the folks that participate on that, and we, for our deep dive exercise into the program. Thank you all. Um, this year was really special because not only we exceeded the number of external sponsors more than we've ever had. So, normally, we would be able to place six, six to eight interns maybe externally, and this year, we were able to place thirty-four. So, we're really excited. And as you can see, commissioners from all different fields, I mean, the companies, you know, we have municipalities, you have, um, companies, you have, uh, other types of groups, law firms, and so, a wide, uh, range of host external sponsors, so that's tremendous. And then you can also see from this slide that, uh, about two-thirds, closer two-thirds come from STEM and engineering, and then the other ones from the other parts of the, that we need support from, business and liberal arts, so in-state and out-of-state schools.
L'Oreal, I'd like to ask one question and circle back on one point. Uh, first question, I think the, I, I'd like to ask you to repeat those two years, data points, on the private companies who provided postings, and, and, uh, I'm not the engineer, you are, so is that a four hundred or five per, five hundred percent increase?
It's a big number.
It's a very big number.
Yeah, typically, six to eight on a good year, you know, for placement, and, and that may be about from three or four external sponsors. So, it's huge increase, and I, I'm gonna explain, I think we did, we did a lot of things differently. You know, before, we were doing, uh, we would do a press release, which is good for a sponsor call, but this year, we, a-again, based on great ideas from our staff, we did, uh, we paid for a LinkedIn post, two posts, um, and Dana with ERD had suggested that. Juanita Baldwin did a, actually a news story on KXAN, and then we did, um, a GovDelivery post. And so, we just changed things around, started thinking differently, you know, we're in a different era, so, with social media, right? And so, some of our old ways may not be the best ways anymore. And, uh, we, just tremendous amount of outreach. And then, of course, the commissioner, all three commissioners, uh, promoted the programs at TWCA and other places, and got the word out, and so, com, companies or river authorities or whoever, uh, reached out to Juanita and said, hey, we wanna participate. And the feedback, and I have the feedback on another slide, has been tremendous.
Well, that is a tremendous success story. I really appreciate your clarifying that one, and, and the, the last point you made is about how many of those, uh, opportunities, the placements were in the STEM field specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think that's a really crucial piece, and that's a crucial success, part of the success story of the, the Mickey Leland Environmental Internship Program, that, returning back to a point you made on the, the slide showing our agency's breakdowns, our demographics by, I think, sex and then ethnicity, that's such a crucial difference, in my opinion, the, the differences that exist. Going back to my, my point about background, we, we can only do so well based off of what the background environment is, and, and I think in the STEM fields, we're still, as a state, as a country, and as a, as a globe, really trying to do better to have a more representative, uh, mix of, of the population who are really professionals in that field, and where the Mickey Leland internship program is focused on recruiting and identifying those individuals, recruiting them to our agency or others, I, I think this is just exactly the, the piece that's most directly changing the background conditions of the state. And so, I, I just applaud y'all for doing that.
Well, and I wanted to make sure that we list the companies or, or entities, because they stepped up, and then the ones with stars are repeat sponsors, so, it's tremendous.
And let me just be very clear about it, thank you, thank you, thank you to our external sponsors and to organizations that are not sponsors yet, um, don't think that this is, sponsorship makes it sound like it's an act of charity. You get a lot of value out of this, you get to meet bright young students who, uh, could be great additions to your organization. So, thanks to the existing sponsors, and I hope more sponsors sign up next year.
Exactly. And it's a way to test out your workforce before you do a permanent hire, so. Okay, and then with respect to looking at the ethnic breakdown of our interns, this was just a tremendous year. We have more diversity than I think we've ever seen in the intern pool. All of the categories went up. You know, to be honest, we had more, we had more spots to fill than, than the previous year, where we had 61, I believe, 62. We had 136 spots, well over 500 applications. And so, we continue to see diversity gains and more opportunity for interns of all races. We saw the most dramatic gains in Black, Hispanic, and Asian students. And then we've added a couple of categories to match the state application. We added the category for two or more races, because that's now in the state application, and then also those that didn't reply. Before, all of that was gathered together under other, but we thought it was important to break out. And as you can see, compare, if you can look at the red versus the orange line, the orange line was 2020, our bar. You can see for our Black students, that's a 900% increase from 2 to 20. For Asians, it's around 800%. And then, certainly with Hispanics, from 12 to 32, significant gains. And then, for our white students, I would say it's about the same, went up one. But in all of the category, no category went down, because we had more slots to fill. And so, probably, again, probably one of the most diverse groups that we've seen. And then here are just the percentages, and you can just see from last year. 2020 was tough, right, because of COVID. And so, we didn't have as many spots. And by having so many external sponsor spots, it helps the agency. The agency doesn't have to carry the entire load, so. And then it exposes more students to the general, general field of environmental protection, so. You can see here on this next slide, and we'll just do this real quickly. One of the things that we looked at in our deep dive was how many applications we were forwarding for consideration. And this year, I am happy to say everyone was forwarded at least once, and the vast majority were forwarded twice. And I just have to give a shout out to Kelly Cameron in HR for making all of that happen. So, and I think it makes a big difference, giving the students two shots at an opportunity. Most significant process changes, certainly the executive leadership at the agency and the Board, promoting the program and supporting the program. Our focus group to identify and remove any barriers for entry into the process. I mentioned referring twice for consideration. Another significant thing that we've done to modernize our approach to applications. And, you know, with COVID and hybrid, we added additional boxes to the application, where before, they could select three locations in Texas, but now they can select three locations, or remote, or we'll work anywhere. We prefer these three, but we'll work anywhere, right? Because they just want the experience. We also, instead of having just a general box for folks to write down, a random list of skills, we created pick lists, you know, are you fluent in Python, C++, you know, whatever. I'm getting out of my league pretty quickly here. But customer service, or public speaking. So we added a whole list, and that was really huge, because the external sponsors look at that. And as, as well as internal, but it was really key for them. We talked about promoting external sponsors. The interview, intern interview and selection process, we really looked at that closely and made some modifications. We looked at the questions that are asked to make them more representative of a pre-entry applicant. You know, it's not only school experiences, it could be life experiences, it could be volunteer experiences, it could be a whole list of things. In our external relations division, they provide emotional videos. We require internal sponsors to interview all of the candidates that were forwarded, typically it was eight, versus, you know, only interviewing two of the eight. And that, I think that made a huge difference. We, we didn't let, we didn't allow pre-selections this time. We allowed unofficial transcripts, and we also allowed professional, or in addition to professor references or other types of references. And then, I think the next one is really key. We did an increased outreach to universities, as well as used handshake, which is what most college students use to find jobs. Internal sponsors, they sent feedback to HR about which candidates they didn't interview or didn't accept the job. That way, those kids, those students could go back into the pool for reconsideration. And then finally, remote was a big thing. It was huge as far as placement and being able to match up students. We expanded our recruiting, and that is burnt orange, just for the record, for longhorns in the room. As you can see, in previous years, we did nine, and those were in-person events. This year, we took advantage of virtual opportunities, and we were able to do 30, 10 HBCUs, some of them out of the state. This year, we've already done nine. Two will be in person, and they're going to, they're going to reach out to Texas Tech with the Society of Hispanic Engineers for an information session. And then we've just done a lot with HBCUs and other large minority population universities, as well as use different platforms and info sessions and careers. For 2022, we're going to add just a few things. I think the most important thing to point out is we're going to add a language, language section, because some of the external sponsors ask for bilingual capabilities. And so, we're going to add that. As well as opportunities for partial, remote, or hybrid, or whatever, so we're going to do that. And lastly, I want to point out that several of the offices kind of piloted diverse hiring panels, and we think that really helped expand the opportunities for our diverse workforce. Just real quickly, some of the feedback from the sponsors, basically almost five stars. They love the program, it'll help the individuals. For external sponsors, they really keyed in on skill sets as really a key point for them. Internally, of course, really high marks for the program. And internally, the interview was really key in their selection process for the, for the sponsors who responded. And so, we did provide a tool for the interns to use to improve or to work on interview skills. So, that's available for them as well.
L'Oreal, what is our guidance for applicants, students who are interested in, in the program? And what I was wondering is, you know, if we, if our external sponsors are telling us that they like to see a certain skill set, maybe it'd be helpful for us to tell the applicants what kind of a skill set they're looking for, just build it into maybe some existing guidance.
I think we can work on that. I'm looking at Kelly, we can talk about that and see, maybe we can reach out to the external sponsors and see what type of skills they really honed in on. I know one that they were really interested in is work with Excel. That was really popular, from what I understand, from Kelly Cameron. And so, we can, you know, maybe put that on the flyer, hey, here are some of the key skills that employers look for. And then, in, intern feedback. I think the most important part of this slide is the very last point. 100% said they would work for the agency and would recommend the program, and they felt welcome, so. I think that's just A++. I, I do want to reckon, because it takes a team effort to do all of these things and all of these initiatives. So I wanted to, I list the names of everybody who's involved with the training, recruiting, coordinating, Kelly, Juanita, and just a list of folks. As you can see, Commissioners, it's a, it's a long list of folks in, in HR. The white Texas for the folks in human resources, and then the blue for external relations. But I just so appreciate all of their efforts. Now moving on to our social content, our social media content. We started an Envision series, so that we could share with the community some of our scientists and engineers that represent minority groups, and just let students know at the, at the high school, middle school, and junior elementary school level, that they can see themselves in those roles. And I think Chairman, you mentioned this is something we should be doing last year. And so, Ryan Schop created these Envision series, and here's just some of the, of our wonderful employees, Naomi Jade and Frederick, who have done videos, and we've shared those with Dallas Independent School District and their environmental science program. And you can see all of the impressions, I guess in IT terms, social media terms, that our videos have gotten 5,000 Twitter impressions, and the list goes on and on and on. But I think we're making a difference, not only for the schools, but this information is available for all of Texans and all of the educators in Texas, if they want to use it. And so, students can learn about being a scientist or an engineer, as well as protecting the environment. And then, celebrating diversity is one of the things that was really key in our coffee series, Agency Culture, Culture Fair, Heritage Month. These were all ideas that came up, and so we responded to those ideas. On our YouTube page, we developed five virtual field trips for Dallas Independent School District. And you can see they range from weather to estuaries to protecting our drinking water and recycling. And so, those, those, these are live links, so the videos are available. We had over 4,400 attendees from pre-K to high school. And again, these are all the wonderful folks in the external relations division that put together all of the information, plus all of the videographers, Erin and all of those other folks who helped film and do all of the stuff that we have available as far as resources for webpages, et cetera. And then, just in the era of COVID, we worked with IR to create virtual lunch spaces, where employees could just hop on the lunch, hop on the Teams call and have lunch together. And that was a way to bridge connections, as well as at the section and team level, they were doing that. And then, of course, the mentoring program. And then, we had a cultural, virtual cultural showcase. There were two sessions, 100 participants viewed the cultural showcase. We had 24 employees from, representing countries from around the world. And the topics ranged from fashion to songs, to Polish traditions, arranged marriage, storytelling, everything. So, it was a great time, and we plan to do that again, May 2022, so, in person and virtual. And then here are the, here are our staff who worked to put together the virtual showcase. And what's next? So we want to expand beyond Dallas Independent School District. We looked at school districts around the state that have large minority populations, student populations. And so, we have been trying to reach out to more school districts. And if there are other school districts who are interested in partnering with us on our content, we're happy to do that. So, this is our next step. And then, also, we're going to work to do more advertisement for the mentoring program. As I mentioned before, it's a great opportunity for staff to learn ways to help them in their career, or just meet new people from across the agency, that may not be in your space, right? If you're in water, you may be interested in working with somebody in air, so. And then Commissioner Geneca, thank you for challenging us to, what can we do with the new employees, brand-new employees? So, what we've done is, through our, through the Diversity Mentoring Program umbrella, we've started targeting new employees. We're going to have, you know, short 20-minute sessions with Q and A with some of the mentors that, on our list already, who are willing to share their experiences or give good advice for being a new employee. And so, that is going to start, I believe, this month, or first part of next month. We already have our mentors lined up for our first six sessions. Leroy Biggers, Jaime Garza, Kim Nygren, David Ramirez, Greg Rogers, and Kathy Salceda. So, from Austin and from our regional offices. And that's a great list of mentors who are willing to share their knowledge with our new employees. Just a couple more slides. For the Mickey Leland program, we did a fall extension for five students. And the programs were great, we're happy to have that. And then we're also expanding our recruiting videos for that. We have a new diversity webpage that we plan to launch. First, this is a calendar, we're working on a calendar. It will have all of the agency's activities, including our diversity and inclusion activities. For example, we just, Ryan's folks did videos for Hispanic Heritage Month. Romero and others participated in that. And so, if we ever get to do a tailgate again, it'll all be in one spot. When we get to do a tailgate again. And this is going to be our internal webpage on diversity and inclusion. And where we'll have the work sessions, as well as the calendar, which says, let's get together. And then, so you can find things related to it, you know, STEM, mentoring, virtual lunches, all in one place. And then, we're going to have an external website, and this is a live link, but I think it would, it would click me, I'm not sure it would work the way we need it to work in this span of time. But this is a picture of it, we're going to do, have an external website for recruiting purposes, and just to let everyone know that we're, you know, it's important to us. And you can see, there's the video with John Hall that he did for Black History Month. Will be on there, and how, you know, we're putting vision into action, along with our overall goal of having an organic and sustainable workforce. And then finally, we have, I have to give Jocelyn McMillan, my new special assistant, credit for this. We've, her idea, we're going to be working with the National Panellanic Council, which includes all of the African-American Greek organizations and colleges, to do outreach and expose them to the agency. And I'll show you the flyer. But this is a completely new population for us, that we want to expose for the Mickey Leland program, as well as the agency. And then, everyone knows Clarabelle Diaz, who provides an update to the Commissioners as agenda on our, on our Hub program, our historically underutilized business program. We've participated in 42 economic opportunity forums for Hub. We maintain sponsorship of two mentor protege agreements, and many more great things that the Hub program does for the agency, as well as for Texas. And so, we're heavily involved in that. And then also, Ashley Forbes Brentway, Office of Waste, invited me to a, a technical session with Dr. Harvey and Dr. Grischlinger with Texas Southern University. And it was a, it was a statistical presentation on uranium mining and pico curies, and Commissioner, you would have loved it. It was so amazing, and she's such an outstanding, world-renowned statistician. She's in the National Museum for African-American History in DC, just world-renowned. And it was a fantastic presentation, but they have a partnership with Texas Southern. And so, Commissioner, I'll make sure next time you get an invitation. And I'm going to brush up on my pico curies. And then finally, this is the flyer for reaching out to the Greek organizations. And thanks to Ryan's folks for putting this together. And the cool thing for me is, we got a QR code at the bottom. So if you scan over it, it pops up to the Mickey Leland page. And so, it's fancy, I'm so excited. Thank you, Jocelyn, for the idea and for working with them on this. But all of the colors of the Greek organizations are at the top. And so, we're hoping that this speaks to that community, and that they'll check out the agency.
I, I love it. I don't want to delve in outside of my, above my depth, but maybe making more prominently featured on the flyer that remote opportunities are, are an option, or are available, may catch more people. I'm not interested in Texas, but I think the Panellanic Council is an amazingly broad reach, and that's a great suggestion, I love it. And so, let's make sure we grab the, the out-of-staters. At the, at the risk of getting some, some non-Texans in our Mickey Leland program, I'm more confident that we'll turn them into Texans after that, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think we're going to expand our recruiting to a couple of universities that, that are right outside of Texas, but they could that, um, that are right outside of Texas, but they could drive here in ten minutes.
Better, better way to say it, Texans who haven't gotten here yet.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, and Commissioners, that's all I have, I'm available for questions, thank you.
Colleagues, questions? Good golly, that's a lot. That is just an amazing amount of, of work. And thank you, I really appreciate everything, not just from you, L'Oreal, but all the folks who put a lot of time into this. I think it's, I think it's work, uh, very, time and effort well spent, you know, in terms of improving the quality of our lives, just working inside the agency, improving, um, the, the quality of, of candidates who get attracted to this field of environmental protection. And, uh, I think, I think it puts us in the right place and heading in the right direction, so. So, cheers.
I, I will, I'll second that and, and just say that's a, a very good sentiment and this is a tremendously positive subject to hear about in, in terms of looking at, at the effort that, that y'all are applying and, uh, evaluating our agency and offering recommendations for how we may want to consider changing our processes to be more thoughtful moving forward. And I, I just want to commend you in, in continuing to look further into where diversity may be a meaningful element that we haven't fully, fully tuned into yet to, to get the best engagement and, and connection out of our, out of our employees. To, one thought that was really close at my mind comes, uh, comes from the, uh, the points on, on the mentorship program where we're really building that and reflecting back on my, my personal career, my opportunities that I really felt like I grew the most. And it was directly in those mentor relationships. And it goes to a point that our, our Director of, uh, O A S, uh, Ms., Ms. Kelly Kilindon had, uh, raised a great point with me just earlier, earlier this week that got, obviously got me in that frame of mind. The, the, the conversation we have as a society where we're trying to, uh, usefully describe each other in terms of generations and in terms of, uh, that, that so, so often oversimplifies and seems to divide. But really, I think speaks to where there are very, very real differences in, in just our, our workforce over the years. Uh, the, the suggestion of putting a, a checklist of skills, a, a push list, give them the options rather than just a blank box, tell us your skills. I think that's such a brilliant idea because if I'm a college student today, the skills that come to my mind for what, what distinguishes me from anybody else are entirely different than what I, as a agency employee, would look at that worker and try to evaluate them and say, they're the skills that I care about. They don't appreciate and even recognize what their skills are. They don't realize that their ability to do something without thinking of it is a very real skill that we have bled and sweated, sweated for to achieve so that our, our employees can post a weekly social media thing that these young workers could, could completely transform how we're doing it. And because they didn't think to put social media as a skill, we didn't realize that we needed to say social media is. I, I think that that is a really tremendously productive area to dive into and just a great example to, to highlight all of the potential that I, the untapped potential that I think exists in, in how we can harness the strengths that our agency's workforce's diversity really could give us. So, thank you all again and, uh, I'll, I'll stop here because I could just talk all day and I'm, I'm very eager to get into the, the weeds on all this because I think where we're evaluating ourselves as a workforce and our, our agency employees is, is that organic thing that we've created to try to serve the state and the public's need. It's, it's a little different than the environmental science that we really do day to day and it's something that really excites me and I'm, I'm just proud, uh, could not be more proud of this team. Uh, Director Baker, your leadership, the team you've put together, uh, all the way down, down into the, into the agency and actively working to, to, to look back at those, uh, at those workforce numbers on, on this kind of a recurring basis is just something that I'm really glad to see us doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just add real quick, um, you ended by saying you're really proud and that's what I was gonna chime in and say, um, because however many, sixty, however slides, that's a lot of work. This is, what y'all have done here was a lot of work. And, um, and I, I hope everyone that worked on it in Kelly's shop and Edie's shop is proud of it um, because you should be. And what I'm most proud of, I think I would say, uh, it's a long list, but the coffees, right? You heard people, you're putting things into action and this data shows it. So, keep up the good work and, uh, thanks for all the data. I, I love that it's data-driven because I think sometimes these topics can get emotional. And I, I'm proud of how we're addressing the issues and how y'all are, are going at it because I think the data speaks for itself. And so, anyway, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank all of you for your support.
And Chairman, if I, I may real quick, the, as you saw, the, the hard work that L'Oreal has put into this with our folks, it's not a one-size-fits-all or it's not one magic bullet, it's multiple things, get our messaging out there. And my personal experience with, um, the Hispanic Heritage Month videos, I was honored that y'all asked me to tell my story. Um, you know, my mom called me and said, you know, uh, emotional, like proud of me. My curmudgeonly younger brother is like, called me, said, I'm proud of you, you did good. Uh, keep up the good work, click, I'm like, thanks. Uh, so, but really what resonated was how many people reached out to me via social media or my personal phone to say, from diverse backgrounds from all over the state, saying, man, I grew up the same way, um, and found a lot of similarities in our upbringing, you know? And that's the, Commissioner Janekka, you touched on it, the really, while we're diverse and that's what makes this, this country and the state beautiful, there's so many bonds that really we have and having those conversations is invaluable. So, it's exciting what we've embarked upon and what we'll be doing to have that sustainable culture here. So, uh, just as my personal note, I really can't tell you how honored I was to share my family's story as part of that and just being the, the puzzle that we're piecing together to give folks the opportunity to tell their story, but also showcase how wonderful this agency is and, um, the passion that everybody shares to serve our, our fellow citizens. So, thank you all very much and thank you, L'Oreal, for all your work.
Thank you, Romero. Anything else for the good of the order on this topic? All right, um, Mary, let's call the next items.
Uh, the next items are for executive session, but the commission will not be meeting in executive session today.
All right, and with that, the time is ten forty-seven and we are adjourned.